I'd like to call the White Springs Town Council regular. I'd like to call the Town Council regular. The White Springs Town Council regular council meeting is ordered Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. Please stand for the invitation and pleasure of the evening.
Emma Powell, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this brand new day, brand new mercy, and brand new grace. We ask that you should help us to make righteous decisions in this council meeting. Visions to have your way, and just may we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kizzi Birch here, Lenny Pope here, Jaclyn Williams, Anita Rivers is present. We have a forum, we will continue with the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, and or amendments to the agenda of the council? Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I keep a bird motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Can I get a second to the motion?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting?
I keep a bird motion that we approve the minutes from March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Financial report, Mr. Richard Powell.
Okay, so the financial report is in now. And so, if this is a report for the five months ended February. And so this is the report. Okay, so this is a report for the five months ended February, which is about forty percent of the fiscal year. So the first fund we're looking at is general fund, the first page. And this, to date, the town has collected three seventy-five, one twenty-nine, which is the forty percent of the budget. The, to date, the percent is about forty-two percent, so you're right on budget for revenue for the general fund. Okay, we have all the line items that you can look at on your own, but if you go to the third page, and the total expenses are three forty-one, seven fifty-six. So the town general fund's capacity, thirteen thousand, three seventy-three. Those expenses are thirty-nine percent of the budget, so you're tracking well on the budget and general fund. The next page is the enterprise fund, and at the top it says budget versus actual budget. Yeah, anyway, it says enterprise fund. So at the top, the revenue is three twenty-eight, five ninety-two, which is, again, we're looking at forty, forty-one percent, it's fifty-nine percent of the budget. Could be, you know, part of that excess is the, is receiving the grant from the county early, but you're still ahead of budget, collecting that budget in enterprise funds. So you go over to the last page, and the expenses are one eighty, five seventy-eight, which again is, it's well under budget, that's thirty-one percent of the budget. Again, we're looking at like forty percent. So at this stage, the enterprise fund, there's possibly one forty-seven, seven fourteen. But enterprise fund is very healthy. Any questions from the council? Great, okay, and as we continue to work with staff and improve and streamline installing internal controls to have better accountability, and everyone's working well with us.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, administrator and departmental reports, Tom Andrew, Vanessa Jordan.
What did I have? Administrator, that's out of the ordinary, is I, I, we're gonna come about her, um, community development.
The community development block grant that we secured from last year is six hundred plus thousand dollars, and we're moving right along, but right now we are at six residents that are gonna be rebuilt, and that will probably take up most of our six hundred thousand, they would use anything less than that anyway. If there was something left, we'd just use it towards whatever the building engineering will be coming and doing their phase. The environmental portion will be done probably in the next couple of weeks. So we're on task, and we're proud to be able to help the community in receiving that particular grant and getting those houses where they need to be.
So everybody getting new houses?
From my understanding, everybody's getting, I know three are, but most probably will be torn down and rebuilt, because it's gonna cost less to just build, rebuild versus trying to refurbish. So we are good. Yeah, it's a blessing.
Good job, Sam.
You're welcome, baby. I kinda want to say, I'll put it out here, but I wanted to mention that I got a letter for a council vacancy last week, and he's here tonight, I didn't know he was gonna be here tonight, cause he's talking about something else. But we had a letter from Randolph King Henry Williams, and he is interested in serving the community in the capacity of a member of the town council. I am a lifelong member of the town of White Springs, a nineteen-seventy-one graduate of Hamilton High School, Jasper, Florida, member of New Bethel AM church, retired from the Veterans Administrative Hospital in Lake City, parents of the late John Williams, and my mother is lovely May Williams. I am a single father of three children. I love my community and work with youth, add the elderly, I'm willing to assist in serving in any way that I can. I appreciate your consideration, yours truly, Randolph King Henry Williams. And this was hand delivered on April third.
Ray, Ray.
Yeah, Ray. I'm sorry, Ray, two seconds. He's in the audience, and I said he's here tonight, but to raise your hand. Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. Okay, Ray.
I would like to Ray, he's a, uh, Ray.
First thing I have is a, this is soft start in the master lift station. Two different ones, and then I went online and tried finding a cheaper soft start, but I couldn't. This for the bachelor lift station's pump. And what it does, whenever that pump starts up, it keeps that pump from just going full force and having to last. So, but the number two pump is not the pump, it's the soft start right now. So, I had a, two different.
Is this the one that was stolen, or is this something? Is this the pump that was stolen?
No, I get it, I get it.
They're getting that one today.
This is just soft start. It was, I thought it was on a warranty, because in two thousand twenty-one, December two thousand twenty-one, they put the pumps in and re, uh, rehabilitated that whole lift station, but it's not on a warranty. So right now I'm down to one pump. Even though I have a spare pump out under cover, it is the number two, without that soft start. So I have a quote from Barney's Pump, Ray electric, and then the two quotes that I went online to try to see if I can find a cheaper.
So Barney's Pump says the cheapest is at twenty-nine fifty, compared to Grandma's Sons at twelve-five seventy. And the two online quotes are six thousand and seventy-seven hundred. So Barney's Pump is the.
Cause sometimes when we go with the cheaper one, we don't get it, people coming out.
Now, he is, this is a big gap, so I just want to say.
But he worked with Barney's a lot, so.
Yeah, I just, Ray, you were, what he was suggesting.
What's that?
Barney's.
Barney's. They're the cheapest.
So.
It's not like the fire hydrant, when you had one that came out, they just did it, and then they charged us after hours every time they came. This is not like that, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Does that sound different?
Yes.
Well, let us take care of this first.
No, no.
Alright, so can I get a motion to approve for a soft start's pump for twenty-nine fifty with Barney's pumps?
I keep a bird motion that we approved the soft start pump, twenty-nine hundred with Barney's.
Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
This is, this is for the gathering, through one thirty-five, what's that for, lift station? I've been working on the ground, but I haven't heard anything back on it, to rehabilitate that whole lift station. I purchased this pump, that you see on the front cover. That pump's been there, at that lift station for three months. And I use it, pump that lift station down, normally what I do is just go down there and I start the pump, it takes about three hours to pump it down, and most time when it run out of fuel, the lift station pump down. So I went out there Friday, on Good Friday, April fifth, and if you go to the second page, you see where someone cut the tents, went inside the tents, and on third page, where they cut the hoes and stole the, stole the pump. I mean, it's, it's, it's a three hundred dollar pump. I mean, and I probably cut the pit up, I don't know, I mean, why not just cut the lock and put it in. So, to replace the pump, so I don't have to worry about it taking, I was out here on Good Friday, three hours, because I didn't wanna steal a new pump, we went and purchased a new pump. I put it out there, I had sat there with it for three hours, come back Saturday, had to pump it down for three hours in there. Sunday, I'm gonna have to come over here seven days a week to pump that lift station down with that pump, just to make sure nobody steals it. Had that during the week, even maybe Chuck or Kurt watched that pump while I pumped that lift station down. That's three hours a week, beyond cutting grass, I mean, so I pulled the pump, me and Chuckie and Kurt pulled the pump Monday, it was down in the hole, it's almost twenty years old. So, I don't know, it may last a week, and it may last two weeks, and it may last two months. But we got it dragged out, put the pump back in the hole, and today it's still working, but last time I worked on it a week, and that's why we went back to that, uh, fourth pump. The quotes that I have here is for, for one pump. I need, I need two pumps.
So these quotes are from what?
Yeah, that's from one.
Do you want us to approve for?
I only have two quotes, because.
Alright, you want us to approve for two pumps, that would be forty-six hundred.
And I reached out to two other members, King's pump, Lower Jackson, and Gray electric, but Gray electric can get that pump, and King's pump, Lower Jackson, I believe.
Alright, so can I get a motion to approve for Barney's pump, for two pumps, from Barney's Pumps Incorporated? For four-three hundred?
Oh, mostly that you approve for six hundred, one, for two pumps.
Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Oh, but it was saving, Ray's saving.
But now, this is serious, that's right. Bring it back to the yet. He said it was his last.
This is that, that Kurt Fisher's out on one thirty-five, what's that? Kurt was three meters, a couple weeks ago, he caught me around there, and, uh, said there was a sinkhole, around there where you see the two buried pits. So I went out there and I looked, and just to keep a jump to the conclusion, we filled the sinkhole in what appeared to be the dirt. But the dirt's down, it's settled right now. So what it appears to be, is we can get an infiltration coming in through a sewer line and running right there, where you see the two buried pits. So at this time, I don't know, we're still investigating. I've got, uh, waterable water coming out next Tuesday, we're gonna go smoke this, we're gonna run a camera, and see if we can determine our actual cause of the issue going on. But, worst case scenario, that sewer line is approximately twelve, fifteen feet deep. The water table is very high, so in order to go down, I mean, I can't do it, I wish I could, but I can't. What's gonna happen, and what has to happen, you gotta put a well pour in there, meaning just like a well, out in the country or somewhere, and pump all that water out, to dry it out, and then you have to dig down fifteen feet with excavator, and put a trench box in there to keep the dirt from tinging on top of it, in order to fix that, repair it. If, that's what it is, like I said, right now we're just, we're just investigating, you know, just to determine what the actual cause is. There's also a manhole right there that we haven't been able to find in the vicinity of that area. If I find that manhole, it may be for the embers coming into that manhole. In that space, we can go down in that manhole and put water around the lateral coming in, and fix the issues there. That's, that's probably gonna be the cheapest. If you look over on the second page, that's a manhole downstream, from where the sand and all settled. You see that little white curb right there that you, that's the quotes coming in, everything around that is sand. And if you go to the third page, this is the pinhole down in the sewer line. That's the sand I'm getting from the sewer line. So that sand is going through two pumps, well, no pump right now, at one thirty-five, I was there. But it's going, it is going through our pumps at the master lift station. And while it's doing that sand, it just wears the pump down, the, the, and pedal it out on the pump, it wears it down, that sand. So that sand is going all the way out there into the sewer line. The pumps at the master lift station are thirty thousand dollars a piece, those are our ninety-five horsepower pumps. We can't afford to lose a pump, or damage a pump, if it's sand. So, worst case scenario, and this, this ain't something that, uh, and it ain't, it's any contract, this is gonna be, this is major. And this is gonna take somebody like Charles Boone, or Art Walker, which I call Art Walker, and they said they're just tied up right now, you know, they can't even get over here. But Charles Boone said he can come over there, and then you put in the wells, and pump the water out, and then, once he gets the water all pumped up, he can put a trench box in, go down, and find what's going on. Once he does that, but the problem, the cost, the worst case scenario, is thirty thousand dollars. So I'm not saying that's worth it, but if not, he won't put that out. But it has to be figured out, what's gonna happen, and infiltration is going to carry off, or having the pumps at the master lift station, or at the sewer line, you're gonna have a lot of sand, and your sewer line, you're gonna have to pump all that ammunition company, who want that pump running.
Right, the man, she put, once you replace that, you have to have that, that, um, side pump, that they stole, you have to keep pumping out that way? You gotta eliminate this one.
I would still pump for the master lift station.
No, I'm saying, you can eliminate that pump, didn't you?
Yeah, I eliminated, I haven't set it up in my pump.
Okay, that's.
By doing that, yeah.
And that saved us man hours, for you.
But I mean, I mean, like I said, I, I, we're gonna try everything we can to find out what's going on, you know. Hopefully, it's just an ember coming into the manhole, we go down the manhole, put the water, and we're talking maybe, probably do that, probably five, seven thousand dollars. But I just gonna put out there, worst case scenario.
Can I, I wanna ask if y'all make a motion, because if they come out and do work, we can't, we can't wait until next month for y'all to approve the deal. So, anything that's related to this up to the third, I need to have authorization to write this check, the payment.
Up to the third month?
Yes. You understand what I'm saying, because they would have to wait a month, and if it goes out next, we can't wait, like you said, we need to have.
The other thing too, now that sewer, all that sewer was put in out there, and it took up, and, uh, for the most part, the life expectancy of sewer lateral line is sixty years. So that's, that's just why I believe in something inside that manhole, if they didn't get everything tied in, you know, where it's just leaking right there. It's just horrifying to believe that there was a leak in that sewer line, if you're talking about something that just grabs your floor, there's not even a pressure on it or anything. There's nothing that could damage that line, I mean, talk fifteen feet down, even if wind strength came through a board, they're not more than fifteen feet.
So what is it approved for the?
Repairs to the?
For repairs to one thirty-five?
Repair replacement, repair or hospital replacement. Correct, Ray? Repair or hospital replacement.
Of the line?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that would be thirty thousand.
Of the school or not?
Yeah.
So, can I get a motion to approve up to thirty thousand dollars for the repair and replacement of the sewer line if needed?
I keep a bird motion that we approve up to thirty thousand for the repair and hospital replacement of the sewer line.
Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Now, Ray, you have a two. Before the last month, before you came, whatever.
You gonna cop it all before?
Y'all gonna jump on Ray to the town, uh, the.
Did Steve, Steve give you anything, or no?
That's all I have.
No, I'm glad. Presentation, Dasha Brown, May Day.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I stand before you with regards to May Day, two K twenty-four. I'm asking for permission and support with regards to this. I have completed the rental agreement, I do have the life insurance policy for the event, I have a security pending in place, and it's for the town. So, I know what to say, but I'm speaking to you all about it. Do you have any questions, or how does it look today? Oh, yeah, May eighteenth, y'all, May eighteenth, um, ten A M to eight P M. So it's gonna be day by day, to be honest, it'll probably be ending before eight P M. Just to make sure everything is cleared out. Do anybody have any questions?
Ray, say it's next.
It will be at the Adams Memorial, um, softball field.
We appreciate you. Y'all got the time to do it for us, for the thanks.
Uh, uh, security.
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be a charity, or be things that's going on?
Yes, family's just the usual, May Day, you know, unification, uh, passing the neighborhood, go to school altogether. And then I would like to incorporate a car show, in which I would fund myself to get a trophy and stuff of that nature. To bring us all together.
So the benefit fee, that will help you with the trophy?
It can, uh, we're not hoping to be right now, but it's okay. It's just, I just wanna organize, um, I don't have any control what goes on, or real estate, anything outside of that, but as far as the softball field, yeah, I just.
After eight, we don't have nothing to do.
We're getting there with trophies after we have a contact, as in my phone.
Yeah, more questions, yes, excuse me.
Um, so you're saying you're approving the apples, who we at the baseball field, and it's gonna be from team A, or?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we need approval in itself, other than what they're doing, may do, and we need especially making the hands off that. How do you, it's only on street.
So it's just gonna be approval in itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, well, I wanna contain, I mean, they wanted that ball field, so for it to be at the ball field, we gonna have to meet the law enforcement?
Yes, ma'am.
With y'all, so we can get a good understanding of how this traffic can be done. Because I know what people are gonna wanna do, just ride through, keep going through the ball field, and around the graveyard. And so that road needs to be blocked, and, and once you put in there, you park, and if they, once they leave out and go around, you know, and come out. No, but they're gonna have to stay that way, because when they come outside, we really got turn, a turn, you know they wanna come across again, they go back, and so I want it to obviously be there to make them go right. So they gotta go back out of town, because all the roads gonna be blocked, and the road.
But okay. That's what I mean, we gotta have the law enforcement.
This is John.
Alright, private security, Mr. Lucas Barton.
I can speak loud, I don't know, I don't even, like, how everybody doing? Uh, just give you a little background information about myself, or people in the audience, and also for the mayor. Um, I've been doing law enforcement for over twenty-six years. I'm currently certified FDLE firearm instructor, K instructor, what that means, I train all the police, correct, since a lot of the big agencies, security agencies, sending people to lead, to get trained, I do people like concealed weapons, all that stuff like that. We deal a lot with like celebrities, big crowds. But one of the things I was trying to propose is, I've been going to Lake City and some of the other areas, is one of my other big towns are doing, um, are they incorporating the security company alone with law enforcement? When I initially started my company, I started it for like the young men, because most, not be racist in favor, most black people, they grew up hating law enforcement. Alright, because we have a bad background about it, but, and so I kinda taught eighteen double hockey sticks, with my, some of my families and stuff, for being in law enforcement. But what I did is I started my company, because the security actually have to do a lot of the same backgrounds, and we use the same books, and we have to do the same shooting courses, everything that law enforcement has to do. So what I do is I have that as a stepping stone for a lot of the guys that come and work for me, for them to get, to start their career in law enforcement. So what I did is, you know, go around and try to recruit a lot of the young men, and let them see that, look, it's not bad, and let the children see that not every time the police come, that there's problems with daddy. And let the children see that not every time a police come, that it's problems with daddy, your daddy going to jail, because that's what brings us to hate them. Because when you're small, you see your uncles going to jail, cause you don't know, you, you don't have that understanding that, hey, look, he done something wrong. Or he may have done something wrong and he has to go to jail, all a child does is just see a police come and they putting handcuffs on him, so you have most of the blacks. Nobody wanna really go to the academy to be an officer. It's the same thing now, even at the police academy, I teach at FGC, um, going to Gateway. Um, and when you look at the classes, especially when it comes to law enforcement, you see a lot more in the correction side of it. But in the actual law enforcement, you really don't. And, and then it's a lot of black, bad publicity between the officers and the black community and all that. So I've been trying to kinda bridge that gap a little bit, to let them see it's not, not every officer is bad and not every black person is bad. You know what I mean? So one of the things I try to do is that, you know, God, I actually got a little book that kinda show you a little bit of my background and stuff like that, um. I've been a gang coordinator over the state of Florida for like eighteen years, which means I dealt with gangs all over the state of Florida. So I'm used to gangs, used to dealing with people, and a lot of times, just a, a, a common courtesy, just talking to people, actually comes to a lot of the situations down. You know what I mean? Um, and, uh, some, you know, so I teach classes on teaching people how to communicate with people back and forth. Cause a lot of times, it's not what you say, but sometimes how you say it that can cause it to be a lot of problems. I'm not gonna take up too much in time, but just kinda give y'all the idea, we are interested in working with the local law enforcement. Uh, one of the benefits of having the private security is, you can change a lot of law, most of the police agencies, I've been seeing that in law enforcement, the correction, no matter how much they're paying, they're still so short and understaffed, it's crazy. All right, um, one of the things that security does is, it's a difference between a security officer and a security guard. So, a lot of y'all been looking at, oh, he's just a guard, they don't get it. If you look at my guys, or any of the guys that got, when you look at that off, their license, it says security officer, cause they receive a certain training, they also have to get training once a year. Um, believe it or not, my guys get a lot more training than the local law enforcement. All right, um, when I was an officer, before I became a FDLE firearm instructor, I only went to class once, maybe twice a year when they have to make the qualify. I hated guns. All right, but then when I got out and I started my own company, and I started doing, you know, private security and stuff like that, and I'm also a, a gun dealer, so I'm a firearm. I sell firearms and all this other, but, um, I have over like thirty, thirty people that work for me. And like I said, a lot of them go on to join law enforcement. But I do want to, you know, talk about partners, and I was just talking to Mr. Martinez, I didn't know he was doing like one, one or two officers that come and patrol, so I'm just kinda like, the way they come, they're backup. You know, something like, stuff like that, or what if, it's two incidents going on at one time, or whatever you got, a big incident going on at one time. He was just talking to me about, you know, the Mayday and all that stuff, but we are interested in, in partnering up with you guys. And like I said, I can give you more information about my company, I don't wanna take up too much of the time, but I can give you more information, I actually got a book, but I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting, like I said, I got like thirty people that work with me. Um, but I can answer any question that anybody needs to know, cause a lot of people like, oh, well, what can security do? Well, security can do almost everything that a law enforcement officer can do, even up to great bodily harm or death. Hey, Lou, come over here.
And that's it, fine.
But they can, they can do it now, a lot of people say, well, they can't arrest him, no, but security can detain them until local law enforcement get it. Law states that, you will not agree, so that security can detain that person until the local law enforcement get it. And once they get here, we turn it over there and we get all the information. A lot of times, what, what people don't realize is, security is a big deterrent. All right, when people see security or they see firearm, depends on how it is, and that's why I talk to all my staff, depending how you look, your appearance means a lot. All right, and when you call people, note, and I've talked to the lo- local law enforcement, everybody when they come through the academy, look, keep your uniform neat. Be neat, cause people tell how well you care about your job by the way you dress and the way you carry yourself. That's pretty much all I have for right now, I actually got a book I'm gonna get to you, man, so if you look, it's more information. If anybody got any questions, I don't know if I can answer them now, or go way to the end or how to do it. Okay, this one, so if y'all got any questions, I'll be in the back there then, all right?
All right, citizens from the floor, random. Write your name and address, please.
Yes, uh, one zero five five six Woody Johnson Street, White Springs, Florida. Yes, I'm here today to act for the commission to have, um, uh, community activities there on the ball field for the youth. This summer, we planning on, uh, John Junior Spirit, along with several other guys. Um, the activity will be, we're making an activity that's a kickball, fun, good game, safe, good game there, that they ran on having. We planning on, um, cooking, uh, having food all free, you know, friends for the kids, and we wanna deal with. We're doing a, a big cooking for the kids there, and it's several of us guys, there's J C, John Junior Spirit, John Junior, and, uh, G C, G C?
Joe.
Joe. And they want to have, they, the first one they wanna kick off is like June the eighth. Okay, and like forty-five days implement, we're gonna do the second one round, towards, towards the end of July. Somewhere between the last, the third week or fourth week of July, and then of course, back to school. So, it's all wanting to be free, we wanna deal with the age group from five to fourteen.
Girls are always right, not discriminating.
Yeah, everybody, and everybody, the whole town of White Springs invited.
Yeah, I just didn't know those were always.
And we figured we'd something nice for the kids there, and, uh, right now we've been stocking up on all the meat, you know, that for the kids, with John Junior Spirit and, uh, Joe. And so, and they asked me to present, and I'm proud of it, they got me cooking.
Now, can we, some of the money we have, can we donate something since we, nobody's having a summer program? I mean, but how would they have to do, do they have to do procurement and all of that?
Let me get with, um, Mr. Powell and see how they can go about it, because like you said, the way he asked me.
Right, and I would like to donate something for the kids. We don't have the whole program anymore.
So, um, yeah, we have, uh, we stocking up everything that for, for the food, for the food goes and, uh, cooking the food. Um, and I think it'd be really fun for the kids, and it's a safe game, you know, uh, not selling anything, and everything is free. And that's when the kids all over the city of White Springs. So, we interested in doing that, and like I said, those two guys are working individually and putting it together now.
Are you all gonna have a flyer or something, and we can post it on?
Yes, they can. We made one permission to proceed with this before we get to the end.
And we thinking of the purchase.
Okay, that's fine, we would love to do that for the kids, and like I said, everything is free. And that would have a fun day, like we call it a fun day for the kids, everything free for kids.
Oh, yeah, um.
Yeah, the youth ball field, that's what we need, permission to use the ball field.
So, can I get a motion to approve that the town, um, donate the ball field for the community kids?
I keep some, um, motion that we approve the use of ball field for the kids for the Monday to the summer.
Can I get a second?
I will.
Any discussion?
Um, I, I will. Keving Jones actually been like as a four talking to me, you know?
Oh, yeah, Keving.
Um, Keving, Jermaine, that, they read, it's a couple of, five as a four talking about, also the same things, I don't know if you all interested in working with them. With those guys, you know, they bring a lot of skills from military to college. Dominique Jones, they're working, they just didn't wanna start with the kids anyway, so, um, just to give you that avenue that maybe someone that, a public of you with, bring it, uh, together. But allocate that.
Okay, and I would take that, I would take that back to the ones that, uh, you know, that are interested in, uh, help and bring it in other places, with the festivities for the summer.
Yeah, because, but, uh, I know he's, we're looking for courtiers too. He said we need at least twelve courtiers.
Mars Marshall, would you have, you know, um, martial skills, can you do basketball? Did you train it, or did you, or see them or get good, say football, those are men, and I can get your people some of that.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna ask, and we have some sort of information, so we can meet up, all of, we get together and have a meeting, you know, we're gonna, you know, start the, uh, get one ready for the, uh, June the eighth. And, uh, I think it would be nice, yeah, I know they're guys who call it that, and good people too, very, very.
And they love kids.
And they love kids. So we wanted, we wanna give them a real nice, you know, summer event, yeah, for the kids. We going, trying to go above and beyond to make sure they have a couple of fun days throughout the summer. We will appreciate it if we get authorization to, uh, football field.
Um, will the lights and everything be turned on, like, I know we're gonna have that weekend at night.
But we.
But, but y'all gonna be out there, right?
Not at night. No, we just be like, we go in by eight o'clock, yeah, I'm sorry, but I got people in time, yeah. We gonna start that morning, and we, we, all events and everything will be rolled out. Yeah, not at night, we don't have the kids up there. Any question? Thank you.
Nicole Williams, please come close, write your name and address.
Nicole Williams, one six seven nine seven Mill Street, White Springs. Well, he's covered some of the things that I was asking about, about activities for the kids for the summer. And start up our recreation department again. Um, but I guess y'all got that covered, is that like the plan that we start doing White Springs Recreation Department for kids?
It's not a regulation, that's just not that very people doing.
No, but I'm saying like, that can all, we're together.
But we don't have one right now.
And another thing was, I was trying, um, in the last meeting, y'all had mentioned about the whole program, and I was trying to see what was going on with that. And what activity, you know, who, if anybody had stepped up to try to do the whole program, cause I know that the lady Tate was interested in trying to do something. But I never heard anything, um, more about anything that was gonna be going on for the kids, that, you know, we need activities here for the kids.
The whole program, that's no longer, you know, that was a five oh one C three that held a pad, and it was only through the town for them to handle the funding, so we don't have.
No, but I mean, something along that line of the whole program.
Nobody's comfortable to do it in town.
I know Tate, as you say, I have been talking about this in fourth, um, and actually, um, with all the different things that I do, I'm working on my nonprofit. So, I mean, if it come down to it, I mean, I'm more than willing to help what I can, especially when it comes to kids being involved and giving them. I look at it like this, there's a lot of things going on in the neighborhood down in town. We don't have that White Springs. And so, given the fact that we don't have that White Springs, and people stepping up, like, we're doing it, it's saving our kids, so, I mean. I know she, I told her this morning about something else, but she is still interested in trying to bring that program. Uh, some program of sort to help that focus on.
And another thing, um, that I wanted to ask was, I know a couple of months ago, we're getting a council meeting, we had a young lady, a lady didn't come in. And she was talking about a school in White Springs, and everybody showed support for it, and I wanted to know if you all still felt the same way about a school coming here to the town? And if one did come, would the town be supportive of a school here?
I would support any school to come, so the kids don't have to be bused to Jasper or Redwood or wherever, but I mean, that's.
Okay. With that being said, um. Several of, several citizens from White Springs, along with myself, and the White Springs Open Heritage Coalition, which is a nonprofit. Have been in the process of opening a private school, the name of the school is the South Hamilton Preparatory Academy. Right now, the location has not been finalized yet, because it was some things that had been destroyed at the location that we were looking into. So, we don't know exactly what is up at the location yet. But we are now listed on Florida private schools, the Department of Education, we're now officially a private school. And I wanted to make the C, uh, you know, the citizens and council will support us with this endeavor, because. Parents won't fund a school here, I've gotten a lot of support from the different parents, and a lot, I got commitments for the parent. It's just now we're finalizing everything, we're now available with the go one, two, Parents' Choice website, which is where you go for private schools. You will see the school listed and the different scholarships that the kids can apply for. And that's just a little bit to say, and hope that I can get support from the town and help them.
All right, no old business, new business, Mayday. So, as Doncha was, Doncha was saying about the ball field, um. Well, I was gonna say, you know, you already have to talk about the security and all of that stuff, so, and you worked out the other thing, but the ball field. Yeah, insurance, so, pretty much, cause we didn't find when we ever charged a fee, came up with a, a real fee for the ball field. But that's something that the town would, I would hope that we would just, I mean, it's just a, we don't even have to donate it, because it's a town, and Mayday is sponsored by the town. So that's not something you have to ask for permission to use it. Just, you can ask permission to use it, but we don't have to, like, vote on it or anything.
They got insurance and stuff, they have a car show and all that happens, they have all that, cause it's in that contract.
Right, and it's a period, that is.
It's a period, yes.
Right.
Okay, when, when, I was on the council, we did come up with a fee for the rental of the field only if it was like a private event, it was supposed to be like two hundred and some dollars.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we did vote on that. If, like, just say, I wanna hold field, and I'm gonna hold an event out there. Um, and I'm charging or whatever, if it's for, if a nonprofit get it, it was supposed to go to the discretion of the town. About whether they would charge a fee or whatever, and that fee depends on whether they were charging an entrance fee, but it would have been discounted from the two fifty. Just say, I wanna have a big party out there or whatever, and I won't, and I wanna control the field, and only the people that I want out there. It's supposed to be a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, for every per, every fifty people, you have to have one security officer or one.
Yeah, we got all that, we just never find one.
But as far as like, um, if it's something that's available for the whole community, then we voted to waive the fee for them.
Right, right, okay. All right, so, Mayday covered, other than Vanessa trying to get a group, get law enforcement to meet with us?
Yeah, law enforcement and then whatever security, with the security.
Right, that's security, but we gotta meet with law enforcement, cause of the road, so.
Yeah, we gotta.
So we need everybody to be on the same page, though.
Yeah.
So when you come up with the base and all this, uh, security and.
Yeah, I have to get with security and then, um. And law enforcement.
All right, uh, Community Unity Day.
Wait a minute, so what was the, the, about, they got the ball field?
Nothing, she, okay. Just here with law enforcement. Oh, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted, I talked with Vanessa about this, I wanted to, um. Counsel to, or ask the council to approve for us to purchase pot, porta potties for Mayday, since we're not doing the event like we did last year for Mayday. Cause we're only gonna use some of that funding and do the porta potties.
Cause the bathroom, I think.
It's only two, it's only one bathroom in the ball field?
Wait a minute, which one they stole the toilet out of? Okay, so they, yeah, we only got, we got the one that turned, so they stole that one again.
They stole the bathroom.
So, wait, from the park? The toilet.
From the park?
Yes.
Okay, so how many, how many bathrooms are at the ball field?
But they messed up, cause they, since they unlocked, they told them.
I was, I was, I was keeping those locked, you know, for special business.
But now it's open and a toilet. So, if we can just hit, um.
About four?
I say six.
Six, four red ones. Six, four regular ones and two in case. Question needs, I'm sorry.
So if I can get the council to approve for us to purchase four regular, um.
Well, the council already have it in the budget for May Day.
Well, yes, so we don't need to do that, we just use money out of the. But is the council okay with that, I'm just asking that. Alright. Alright, Community Unity Day. Community Unity Day is something we've been talking about doing with the fire department, so the kids can, um, actually meet the firemen of the town, and the community can actually meet the real fire department that we have, that people say we don't have. But, that's for another time, anyway, um, I wanted to do an event here at the fire station instead of down at the ball field like we did at Community Unity Day a couple of years ago, because I want the kids to be able to go in the fire station and actually see a fire station, get on the fire truck, you know, and they can even wet up that with the hose in the parking lot or whatever, so hope that's that. But, um, yeah, I'd like to do that and do, and bring them hot dogs and just drinks and chips like we did the last Community Unity Day. And that just gives it, hopefully, the community to come together and fellowship.
And what day is that?
Uh, we had come up with a date, I was hoping y'all to help, because they gotta do the donation at the end of July, which we said the end of July. But, um, I guess we need to ask Steve.
Yeah.
What's the best bet for him?
We wanna make sure the majority of the firemen are here, because they are full-time private paramedic.
So just be able, Steve, tell them to soon come up with a date, so.
They did not present it to me.
So we can really do it. Alright, council comments. So I'll start, um, everybody know qualifying ended March nineteenth. March nineteenth. Um, only, there were three seats up for election. It was my seat, Manny's seat, and the other one's seat. So, um, only one qualified, which was me, and so there will not be an election this year, but we do have to fill the two seats. So, as Mr. Williams has already given his letter, we are accepting letters up until no later than four o'clock, May sixth. And Vanessa, if you'll write, put that on the website. Oh, you do the website, I'm sorry, so, will you put that on the website, now, May sixth, no later than four P M, May sixth. No, May seventh at seven thirty A M or eight oh one. It's May sixth at four P M deadline for letters, if you want to be considered for one of the three empty seats on the council. Um.
Two.
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 Oh, I'm moving myself right on that. Uh, for the two empty seats. So, um.
What's the, the time?
Uh, two years.
Two years, okay.
Two years. And that's all I have. May, you know, I don't know what it's like.
You?
Of course, I know.
Um, I would say April twenty eighth. Yes, April twenty eighth, the historic side of White Springs, they're gonna do a community cleanup, um, if anyone wanna come out, he'll, several, four to five or two. And, you know, being on, taking our children back, taking our town back. And so, it was turned into a family fun day, gonna be not just picking up trash, what they're gonna be doing, they're gonna be cleaning the benches down, pressure washing it, even like in Wayside Park, the Grills down, they're gonna clean it out. I know that if I hands up to our utility workers, because looking at other tri-county area, White Springs is like the most beautiful town, it's very cute, and even when you, the kids come and did their community cleanup, and I asked them, I said, well, who can I talk to? I asked one of the ladies at the school, she was like, oh, no, we just gonna, so, well, maybe I should get in touch with the utility workers, I said, if I'm safe, you're not gonna walk from one end of White Springs to the next and pick up a bag of trash. I say, and so it's not gonna, I'm not saying that you're gonna waste your time, but, you know, but with that being said, that they pick up branches or whatever, but from my understanding, it is just mostly some of the things that they can't do, because they, it's three extra hours that they've been there in other places, it's just to help, you know, beautify, um, town back, and so, anybody have any donations for them, then they'll settle them, if you wanna come out with them, to help clean up at one of the parks, they doing Willie Guy, the baseball field, Wayside. Um, I know they was gonna try to, I think, clean up around the, um, behind the community center. But it's a lot of things in which they trying to do, so, if you're able to support them, come out to support them, put your gloves on, clean up, let's take our town back.
What's the date on it?
April twenty eighth.
What time is it?
The, one, one month.
Now, right, did you find out who got those, who tore those branches down or something, piled them up at the community center last time? Was it them or it was somebody else that worked?
Yeah, he had a.
That, that, they, they cut down all these branches and piled them up at the community center the last time, there was a cleanup.
They don't know.
Yes.
Yes, that was the, um, a group of volunteers, the Historical Society and, and gardening ladies, and they cleaned up. They did have some, they, a lot they threw away, some they stacked up, and the things that were left there, they went back with trucks and took it all away, so there's nothing.
Oh, okay, because I knew you found it and you don't let it move. Okay.
You moved it, she said they moved it.
Oh, y'all moved it?
Yes, we moved it.
All, all of it was there?
Yes.
Or just the trash bags?
The, all the branches and, and they, that big pile of, of branches. Yeah, we, we moved that, we took it, took it away to the trash. They probably didn't get there. We got there first.
Um, also, um, I know it's a bit early, but as you all know, I did my ice cream social, this year will be eighteen years that I've been doing my ice cream social, brought back and school supply giveaway. The date is set for August tenth, it will continue to be every, that's our part. I know they have expanded beyond that, but I look at it as a part to be a safe haven, a place to play. It's a face there, the kids aren't close, and so, I will have more detail about it later. It's always the Saturday before them to go back to school, which will be August twelfth. So, uh, y'all come out, I'll give further information later, you'll see flyers, and I welcome, I like helping people help. But I'm mostly, I'll be truly doing it because it gives a sense of community and to give back as well as going back for, um, volunteer hours that they need for scholarships and other things. And so that date is August tenth.
Most likely about that day. She, she was saying that, that White Springs was doing well, it was, it's clean, so when they was picking up, she said they gonna walk from one end of White Springs to the next and get trash. Y'all do, she said, yeah, y'all do an amazing job.
That's, that's what I did, ride, ride about today.
They were working, yeah.
Alright, so, um, is that it for the council?
That's it.
Alright, so I'd like to do a special thanks for Commissioner Eric tough for being here tonight. Great standing here in the audience, come back to feel.
I gotta clear up myself for right now. Where you at, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I don't know, I wanna bring up something.
Go ahead.
And, White Springs is beautiful town, but we have a drainage, a real drainage issue there, around Mill Street. There.
Red's aware of it.
Red's aware of it.
Isn't there something supposed to, we have a grain for that, for the drainage?
Ray has already submitted it to.
Yeah, it's, we, we work it waiting on.
Yeah, they have.
Okay.
Yeah, Ray been working on. Let me clarify something for Ray, because he, he didn't really, yeah, he said, that's not him, the reason why White Springs is clean, that's who?
That's Kurt and Jackie. Jackie.
Kurt and Jackie.
Oh, Kurt and Jackie.
Kurt and Jackie. We wanna make sure y'all knew that it wasn't him.
The devastation of the plant is kicking in. Yeah, oh, yeah. If anybody wanna come help, I'll take a volunteer.
Alright, so if that's it, then meeting is adjourned at seven thirty two P M.